The sound is off in the boardroom.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order for the Oklahoma Commission on Children and Youth at September 21st at 1:01 PM. Let's start. Well, first, just welcome, everybody. Welcome commissioners, welcome guests, welcome staff for taking time to join us today. Mr. Woodyfield, would you mind facilitating staff introductions and guest introductions?
See if we can do this without creating an echo. So, starting with OCCY staff that are joining us online, I'd like to first go to Brittany Hunt-Jassy, if you would please introduce yourself and your role at OCCY.
I'm actually here in the room. I'm going to duck out and go to my new office. I am legislative liaison newly onboard with OCCY in the last few weeks. So, happy to see you all in person. I am gonna duck out, watch most of the meeting from my office.
Next, I'd like to go to the Child Death Review Board Program Manager. If you would introduce yourselves and anyone in the room with you.
Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Rhodes, and I'm the Program Manager for the Child Death Review Board. And my staff, Joseph McGrath, has joined us as well. Appreciate you all making the time to do the special meeting today.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna go next to the Office of Planning and Coordination, starting with their Program Manager and then a long-term employee after that.
Good afternoon. My name is Danielle Gill, and I serve as the Program Manager for the Office of Planning and Coordination. And here, with me today from the PNC team is Ellen Lorenz, our Administrative Assistant and new employee, Nicole George. She started with us a couple of weeks ago, and she is serving as a Community Planner.
I'd like to go next to the Office of Juvenile Systems Oversight. If we could start with Tina Tendergraph and then Harold for Program Management.
Good afternoon. Tina Tendergraph with the Office of Juvenile Systems Oversight. I am one of two supervisors. And I am the only one in the room.
Harold, we're unable to hear you if you're talking.
I'm Harold Jurgensen. I'm the other supervisor for OJSO, and I am also the only one in my room.
Thank you. Looking through the list really quick. We have another new employee starting here at OCCY just this week with the Office of Juvenile Systems Oversight. Regina, if you would introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Regina James. I actually left another state agency to come over here, and I'm glad to be a part of OCCY.
Have I missed anyone else from the Oklahoma Commission on Children and Youth that are joining us virtually?
Ms. Agnew.
Oh, thank you. Or Public Information Officer, if you go next?
Yep, I'm Rob Agnew. I'm the Public Information Officer for OCCY, and just want to say good afternoon to everyone.
Does everyone we have virtually from OCCY?
Any other assistant, James?
We could maybe start with leadership? I'm Mark James. This is Director with the Commission on Youth.
Amanda Jet, Executive Assistant.
I'm Sander Bolser. I'm an Assistant Attorney General assigned to the Commission's.
I'm Jimmy Woodyfield Jr. I'm a Program Manager for freestanding multidisciplinary teams and your virtual moderator. You would introduce yourself?
I am Annette Jacoby, and I am the Commissioner here at the Oklahoma Commission. I'm the Director, sorry. I'm the Director, you are the Commissioner. Here at the Oklahoma Commission on Children and Youth.
Let's do guests. Superintendent Hofmeister, would you mind?
Melissa Bachman-Hamilton with the State Department of Education, working in directly in my office as Executive Assistant.
Our introductions now. Judge Warren, would you mind kicking us off?
Sure. Mike Warren, Judge of the District Court and Representative of the Supreme Court.
Well, do commissioners here in the room, and Commissioner Myers, would you mind kicking us off?
Sure. I am Brenda Myers, and I am the Director of the Community County Juvenile Bureau and the Director of the Juvenile Detention Center in Manch County, and I am the Representative for Juvenile Abuse.
I'm Commissioner Harrington. I am the Vice President of Programs and Sir Wolf here, but I represent OCCY for the children agencies and residential programs.
Hello, I'm Kaylee Kurth from Weatherford. I represent the Par Board from OCCY as a foster parent with an agency.
I'm Carrie Sutton-Hutts, Commissioner at the Department of Health and Substance Services.
Jackie Aaron, I represent the Casa area, and I represent Casa of Western Oklahoma, five counties across Western Oklahoma.
Also a member of the freestanding teams. Your customers don't count.
Hello, everybody. Good to see you. Joy Hofmeister, State Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Angela Marcy, District Attorney for District Two on the Oklahoma District Attorneys Association's representative on the Commission.
I'm Jonathan Hall from Tulsa, and the Governor appointed me to fill the Representing Business and Industry.
Justin Brown, Director of the Department of Human Services and Secretary for Human Services at the State of Oklahoma.
Rachel Holt, Executive Director for the Office of Juvenile Affairs.
John Schneider, Youth and Family Services, here representing the Association of Youth Services.
Thank you. And I'm Lindsay Laird, Vice President of Programs for the Arnold Family Foundation. I was appointed by Senate Pro Tem Greg Tree as an individual with an interest in improving child-serving systems that does not receive statement. So, thank you all for being here. I want to take just a quick moment of privilege. I want to acknowledge DA Marcy for her service to the Commission. This will be her last Commission meeting on this Commission. Do you want to share a moment about where you're headed?
So, I'm gonna be appointed as the District Attorney Representative for the Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation. That will be effective October 2nd. The current DA is retiring, and so I will be moving into that spot pending Senate confirmation. So, I hate to leave, but it's something I feel like I need to do at this point.
DA Marcy has been with the Oklahoma Commission on Children and Youth since July of 2017 and has been a passionate leader and active voice in this, and just wanted to thank you for your service. We will certainly miss you.
I'll get someone good in here for you guys.
Thank you, thank you. Is that everybody who has everybody had an opportunity to introduce themselves? Ms. Jet, I'm assuming we have four. Yes, we do. Okay. We will continue to, item number two on the agenda. So, there have been some recent developments regarding the budget. Director Jacoby and Assistant Director James met with OMES just as recently as this morning. At this point, there will not be a proposed increase in budget request. We are asking to table this discussion, get back with OMES, have a better understanding of the financials, and then reassess. But there is a need to do a reset at this moment, so. Director Jacoby, is there anything you would like to add or?
Well, I'd like to say that Secretary Brown pointed out some issues, and he was spot-on, and I want to thank you because you were. And so, after a lot of hours of conversation this morning and a lot of clarification on terminology, we've got some work to do to perhaps figure out what we have and what categories that we may or may not have understood. And so, we may come back to you with a budget request for this year, but my guess is not. And I think we need to figure out, like, what is there? And just for the new people, we do not have a finance department here. We do not have a finance person. We rely on OMES to provide us services. And I think, I will tell you, Mark James, a lot of this has fallen on Assistant Director James because we don't have this, and so it's a scramble, right? But I have to say, he puts together these gorgeous budgets, which are what we work off of, but there's a disconnect between our budget and what we may really be having at OMES. So, we'll get that clarified, and I think we won't ask for a request this year. So, we're sorry that we made you scramble. We still haven't voted, so we needed you here today, but we did really think that we had a legitimate request. And I do think we need to take a look at it and see what we actually have, because we may have had a little more money than we thought.
Yeah, the message is that we should share is it's not an indication of poor financial condition. It's the opposite.
It's the opposite.
And so, I appreciate that being able to work with OCCY on making sure it's an appropriate request, and then I think we'll move forward.
He asked the question like five different ways, five different times, and it wasn't until he picked up the phone and told me that I just want to be clear on the question, and he was right. So, we'll get it figured out, and we'll come back to you with a clearer picture. But I'm sorry that we made you look at budget requests that we're not getting entertained today.
Again, for commissioners, no concern.
Thank you, Secretary Brown, for your diligence and for taking the deep dive in there. Any other comments or questions before we move on to item number three?
I do. So, I just want to make sure I understand. There is not a vote at all. There is no budget request for state appropriations, is that what you're saying?
No increase requests.
No increase request.
So, should there be a vote for the budget to sort of carry the budget forward from prior years?
You can't do that with the Oklahoma meetings violation. You can't change the budget on the fly if it's been posted, so.
We didn't think about that, because the entire time I've been here, we've always asked for a request. I mean, additional request.
Okay, so.
We did the budget request for this festival last year, the last meet. We did that previously.
The additional.
So, this is the end.
So, you did it in two parts? Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear.
The other item for which we did need to meet today to vote is regarding the freestanding multidisciplinary teams that you know are review and propose determination of functioning status. And with that, I'll kick it over to Mr. Woodyfield to present.
Give me just a moment to pull up the presentation, excuse me.
Mr. Woodyfield, are you sharing your screen?
Oh, that's a great idea, isn't it? Would the board be okay if I took my mask off? Appreciate that.
Can we confirm real quickly that our virtual guests can see the screen? Judge Warren, can you see the PowerPoint on your screen?
Yes, I can.
Well, I'll start off with a little humor. I was advised not to tell any dad jokes when I got here today. I don't have children of my own. I was told it would be faux pas. I figured a little levity is always good, particularly when money is being discussed. My name is Jimmy Woodyfield Jr. I'm a Program Manager here at the Commission for the Freestanding Multidisciplinary Teams Department, and I have the pleasure today to give you kind of a year and summary of the freestanding MDT's. I'd like to acknowledge Commissioner Aaron and Commissioner Myers, who are both coordinators for freestanding teams in Custer and Washtau County and Comanche County, respectively. So, I'm very excited for you to see this data today as well. Freestanding multidisciplinary teams are groups of individuals that come together to investigate cases of child abuse and neglect in the state of Oklahoma. They're not affiliated with the Children's Advocacy Center for accreditation purposes. So, best practices in the United States would suggest that when a case, when a child has made an outcry, disclosure, an allegation, that they would go to a Children's Advocacy Center, which is a one-stop shop where all of the team members, such as prosecution. Angela Marcy is the DA Representative in Custer and Olafville County. Prosecution, local law enforcement, Oklahoma Health Services, Child Protective Services staff, mental health consultant, medical consultant. And in Oklahoma, we strongly recommend a domestic violence expert be a part of an MDT. But at a Children's Advocacy Center, all of those people come together along, typically with forensic interviewers, victim advocates, or child advocates, to best serve the child and family, really with the goal of minimizing additional adversity or trauma on the child. Child abuse and neglect is horribly difficult to prosecute. And so, the goal of an MDT is not to prosecute, merely to help children and their families navigate through what is often a very stressful and confusing process following an allegation of abuse. In Oklahoma, statute outlines multidisciplinary teams, and this is where freestanding teams come in. So, by statute, children's advocacy centers can exist in each district attorney's district. We have 27 districts. There are two exceptions for northeast Oklahoma and then west of Oklahoma City and Canadian County. I think that's District Four. They each have two children's advocacy centers that were grandfathered in before the statute. Otherwise, the counties in that district that don't have a CAC must be served by a freestanding multidisciplinary team. One team can serve multiple contiguous counties, so we see that in Woodward. They serve in a total of five counties. The same in Jackson County and Altis, they serve five counties. And the Panhandle in Texas County, Diamond, they serve four counties. So, the statute helps us to know that one, MDT's are required. And so, we're a little different than many other states. Many other states have children's advocacy centers that maybe do not have other teams not associated with the CAC to help these cases. Another goal of freestanding or general multidisciplinary teams are for people to come together to share information, to collaborate, coordinate, again with the goal of helping this child and their family come through. And as we're having all of the stakeholders at the table who have entered into an inter-agency agreement, really just shines for these teams. If you are interested in the specific statutes, you can find those on the OCCY webpage under the Freestanding MDT section of our website. Several statutes associated with that, as well as administrative code, and then what are called MDT minimum standards. Minimum standards and administrative code are currently pending revisions. I've been at OCCY since 2019 and see a lot of room for improvement in both of those documents, as I'm sure the coordinators and other members of MDT's who are present would agree. Just needs to be tightened up and better defined. Probably look at my notes so I make sure I don't miss anything. You all are staring at me, so that makes me very nervous. There should have been a laugh with that, but okay. Multidisciplinary teams can also include other stakeholders, like schools. Many communities include schools. Juvenile Bureau, Office of Juvenile Affairs are also represented at many multidisciplinary teams, as well as tribal nations. And I strongly encourage freestanding teams currently in Indian country as we know it now from the SCOTUS and subsequent rulings, to make sure that they are liaising with tribal nations in their areas. In Oklahoma, there are currently 37 freestanding multidisciplinary teams. For those of you that don't know me, I love a good map and a good spreadsheet, and they're often very beastie. So, I wanted to give a little bit more of a complicated map. You can see colors are grouped together by district attorney district. So, Commissioner Marcy's district is here in yellow. The red lines then break up Oklahoma by Oklahoma Human Services regions. So, then those are here in brackets all the way around. You'll notice that Oklahoma County has both a Children's Advocacy Center and a freestanding team. That freestanding team was grandfathered in. There are Children's Hospital, the Child Protection Team. And I have some other data about the Oklahoma County team that we'll discuss later. So, on this map, the red triangles are the freestanding teams. The blue stars are children's advocacy centers. They are managed by the Department of Human Services, as well as Children's Advocacy Centers of Oklahoma. Those are accredited through the National Children's Alliance, and that's where KECO comes in to provide support. Funding for multidisciplinary teams in Oklahoma is a very generous appropriation from the Oklahoma Human Services of 2.5 million. There's another about half a million dollars that comes from court costs collected over the year. And then this year, also through the grace of Oklahoma Human Services, an additional $75,000 has been awarded to the revolving account that funds freestanding teams. Additional money also is, will be given to children's advocacy centers. On this map, you can see there are some that have diamonds. Those are counties that are interested in developing their own children's advocacy center. And so, they are in the process. In particular, Jackson County, that's Altis, and Comanche County has expressed a lot of interest. They've made some progress toward that. And then counties in the kind of checkers are counties that do not currently have a formal multidisciplinary team. So, we can see, let's see, Caddo County does not yet have a team for working on that. Oklahoma Human Services has taken the lead and really wants to develop a team there. Let's see, Hughes County, Pawnee and Osage County have had a lot of interest in the past, again led by Oklahoma Human Services staff, but no progress made for different reasons. The pandemic, of course, really has impacted people's bandwidth on what new things they want to take on. And then you can see Grant County at the top as well. Cotton County, I think, is kind of pseudo-served by Comanche County. So, interestingly, Jackson County has now got a significant increase of cases from Greer, and they want to help develop a freestanding team there to kind of share the love, right, and resources across. So, our goal here at OCCY is to make sure that all of these counties are in solid colors so that every county has representation and services from a multidisciplinary team. Teams are funded on the calendar year, and so we have 37 teams this year. And here in a moment, we'll talk about all 37 will be nominated for funding for next year. Any quick questions before moving on? As part of the annual review process, teams are required to complete an annual survey where they submit some data. And so, here is just a quick breakdown of the data, and I'll explain some of the differences here. So, overall, the 37 teams served, you can see there are just over 3,800 children with a slight decrease from the last year. Not a significant decrease. Some teams have seen far fewer children. Some other teams have seen significantly more children. So, it really just ranges. Again, the pandemic has had an impact on who is reporting and then cases being served. Additionally, the court rulings, again reaffirming tribal nation boundaries, has also impacted some teams in eastern Oklahoma as most of their cases involve the federal authorities or tribal nations. In terms of ages served, you can see that 51% fall within the zero to six range. That is about the same nationally. The dotted areas show you what's being served by Oklahoma County Child Protection Team and Children's Hospital. And this year, I chose to split them out separately because they are by far the busiest team, mostly because people from all over the state send children to Children's Hospital for evaluation and wind up being seen there. So, you can see that 23% of this 51 of children zero to six were served at Children's Hospital. They're also probably the largest team. I've had the privilege to sit on that team before. And then you can see as we get into school-aged children, 28% with Oklahoma County CPT, serving 22%, and then in adolescents, this is actually where Oklahoma County serves the least. And then, but also looking at national and statewide data, we know that adolescents are least likely to be reported to the authorities. Here, you can see a racial and ethnic breakdown across categories as well. Looking at the types of abuse that come through, this is where we stray from national data. Multidisciplinary teams primarily focus on investigating child sexual abuse, and then typically priority one referrals to the Department of Human Services, and then typically extreme or very unique cases, like extreme physical abuse, I think torture, things like that. But what the freestanding teams are reporting are about a third of each of the major categories of abuse. The other category of 5%, really when I review the data, would fall under the category of neglect. So, failure to protect witnessing crime, things of that nature. I'm a little bit prouder of this graph here. It's no surprise that children are abused by people that are familiar to them. So, about 80% of this graph represent people known to a child. Stranger danger is just not a significant issue in child abuse neglect, which is also represented in the national data. What I'm proud about this year, without telling the teams, so it's unfair to them, I added in breaking down family members, relatives by adult and child categories. What we know from the National Children's Alliance, when they look at Children's Advocacy Center data, is that about 25% to 30% of cases seen at a CAC is sexual harm initiated by a child. And you may not know that Oklahoma actually leads the world in the treatment and research on children with problematic sexual behavior and adolescents with illegal sexual behavior. I know that Jane Solosty recently was out in Custer and Washtau County. I used to work for Dr. Solosty. She's my mentor and just a brilliant line. And so, I'd like to be able to see what this data is in freestanding multidisciplinary teams, because when we can more accurately identify who is hurting other children, then we can get better services in place. And when it comes to children and adolescents who initiate sexual harm, we know that they need different services than their adult counterparts, that they are vastly different from their adult counterparts. And there's a lot we can do that would help serve every system in Oklahoma as they work with these children. So, I can, for example, most of these children could be served in an outpatient community mental health format instead of being sent to the STAR unit, or, it's become very popular, Piney Ridge in Arkansas. That often means that families cannot go to the treatment facilities for therapy. And so, kids are getting individual treatment. Again, I don't have real children. I've got three make-believe children. Rorschach, who is nine, Sybil, who is seven, and Elektra, we adopted, she's 11. I'm also a mental health therapist by trade, so you might get the names of my children. So, I don't know what it's like to have kids. But for the families that I served for 17 years that had children with problematic sexual behavior, you're not a part of therapy, you're not going to get the outcomes that you want. It's really the caregiver. So, we're hoping here at OCCY to just help tease out this data a little bit more, so we can provide more targeted services. We also ask teams to collect data on special circumstances related to cases that come to them, domestic violence, substance abuse, caregiver, mental health issues, and divorce and custody. And you can see by far that about 1,600 cases, the vast majority of those had a substance abuse issue related to the referral. In Oklahoma, statute was changed to strongly encourage freestanding teams and children's advocacy centers to add a domestic violence expert to their team. I have been working to get the Oklahoma Advisory Task Force on Child Abuse Neglect to add a substance abuse expert. Because again, when we look at what causes child abuse and neglect, domestic violence and substance use, those are major contributing factors to all forms of child maltreatment. Oh, let's be a little hopeful, shall we? This year, because of the tremendous work of Chan Hellman, I added to the annual survey an idea from Director Jacoby, Hope Scale. And this is what we got, is that of... And this is what we got, is that of 37 teams, I got responses from 35 from the coordinators. Coordinators can be anyone. They're typically involved in a system already at the table, so it could be a victim-witness coordinator from the District Attorney's Office. It could be the Director of CASA in Western Oklahoma who is coordinating. And so those are the people that answer these questions on behalf of the team. You can tell here that there are two categories that you don't see represented. And so every team that responded just started in hopeful about their team. And in terms of the items that we asked, can the team solve their own problems? Can they meet their goals? Do you believe that you're making a difference? All of them highly rated. And then you can see there was even a bigger division of people who had really high votes for their team and the work of their team. So it was really exciting to see that. I was fortunate to meet Dr. Hellman last year. He did three trainings on behalf of OCCY and Children's Advocacy Centers of Oklahoma. And then I also recently had coffee with Chan in Virginia, which we'll get to the Virginia trip here in just a moment. And I'd like to read, you can't see it well on the slide, but this was toward the end of his presentation, from Chan Hellman. "At the heart of change is our ability to understand the way things are right now in our lives, and that we can begin to imagine the things how they should be. This is where hope is born. And when I think about multidisciplinary teams and the work we're doing in child abuse and neglect to serve the most vulnerable of our population, I mean, this is it." So in having coffee with Chan in Virginia, we talked more about his work here with Oklahoma Human Services and the state of Oklahoma, and it was wonderful to make that connection. And he knows that OCCY is already on board with hope moving forward. And who can't resist a shameless plug with a picture, right? Beyond freestanding multidisciplinary teams, OCCY has awarded a grant from the Oklahoma Advisory Task Force on Child Abuse Neglect. It's ultimately funding that comes through Oklahoma Human Services. Can you hear that? OHS has been mentioned several times. Human Services receives money from the Children's Justice Act, and that funnels in through the Oklahoma Advisory Task Force. They award that money to applicants every year. I started in 2019. The award, you can see, was right around $44,000. Because of the pandemic, it looks really exciting. But this year, because of Carry Forward, we now have $99,000 to spend on professional training and development for professionals in the state of Oklahoma. So initially, when I started, I got an increase of $30,000 in the budget, just under a significant increase from when I started to today. When it comes to the number of trainings completed, we have historically been completing 20 trainings in the fiscal year. So in fiscal year 19, we got 19 trainings out of 20. Fiscal year 20 was my first year to report data. I was attempting 41 trainings, but because of the pandemic, we could only accomplish 19 of those. Fiscal year 21, does something look odd about that bar graph? I hope so, because we were only required to do, I think, 30 trainings? In the last year, I accomplished 92 trainings in the last year, for about a quarter of the amount of money that was given to us. Really a benefit of the pandemic, if there could be, because providing virtual training then took out a lot of cost for renting venues and travel. But beyond that, it really reflects the number of partnerships that we have. So with the SCOTUS ruling, we were able to partner with the Federal Bureau of Investigations, Department of Justice, the United States Attorney's Office in Northern Oklahoma to produce three multi-day trainings that was attended by hundreds of people, and from local, national, federal, and tribal nation partners. We partnered with Native American Children's Alliance, Children's Advocacy Centers of Oklahoma, and the list goes on, District Attorney's Council. And so we were able to accomplish a lot. The benefit of being able to do virtual training is that people in Guyman, Idabel could get access to high-quality training, international experts from their desk. And so we at OCCY are looking forward to incorporating a hybrid format that we can bring in experts to be in person, but then we can also make that available live streaming to people who register. So I'm very excited. We partnered with Haruv USA, an organization based out of Israel. They have a branch in Tulsa at OU there. And so we're bringing in Christopher Greeley, an expert in abusive head trauma, to do some medical training for medical professionals here in Oklahoma. But again, when you have to travel four hours to get to Tulsa or Oklahoma City, that can be prohibitive. Being this, a hybrid format will allow us to do more. Also here for attendance, on average, OCCY was training maybe about 500 or just over 500 people last year. That went up to 5,200 people trained across those 92 sessions. Those sessions also include training in child birth, which is a forensic interview modeling, our model that we did twice. This current fiscal year, I was talking to the faculty this morning. We planned on two trainings this fiscal year, but there's been such an increased interest that we're now planning three basic trainings for the state of Oklahoma. So there's certainly growth happening.
Good question on that last slide.
Yes.
Why is the minimum for this fiscal year lower than it was for last year?
That is an excellent question, because I'm very nervous about the pandemic. I think, I'm trying to balance that providing 92 sessions last year was maybe a fluke because of our connection with the FBI and DOJ. That was all free training for us. We didn't have to use any of our grant funds to pay federal employees. And so I am undershooting purposely because of the uncertainty of the pandemic. We do have ongoing trainings with the FBI and Department of Justice to continue training their field agents coming to Oklahoma to work cases involving Indian country. So, but I'll tell you already, this year, I've almost met my goal of that many. The way the advisory group counts it is an hour training tick, right? And so we've done partnerships with the Chautauq Nation of Oklahoma. That was eight trainings, all in July. And so that counts toward my minimum. So really just trying to be pragmatic and, but we'll exceed it. And that gives me more information, more data than next year, when we submit our application to increase that number and know that we can do it. I'll also say that we're currently down a training coordinator in my department, and so I have been doing the work of two people for about six months. That's changing hopefully this month, and that will allow us then to increase more. Thank you for the question. So what else are we doing? Some things I inherited. I've mentioned the Oklahoma Advisory Task Force on Child Abuse Neglect. OCCY is a member of that advisory group, with Director Jacoby being a member. She has designated me as her delegate, and I am now currently the vice chair of that advisory group. We also work with Oklahoma CASA, the state organization, as their fiscal agent for their CJA grants. And OCCY was already a member of the Oklahoma Victims of Crime Act Board, and I have now taken on that designation. And then formerly, the Oklahoma Work Group on Children with Problematic Sexual Behavior. Weirdly, I helped create that work group before I came here to OCCY and then came to OCCY. And Harold Jorgensen and others, who I think Director Jacoby was like, you should be a part of that group. They're like, we are not talking about kids and sex. And they're like, well, Jimmy, you talk about it all the time. It's kind of weird to say that out loud, in a professional sense, of course. And so I'm a part of that work group. We produced a list of recommendations and a summary of that work group, which was funded again by OHS, quite a bit of funding there to the Health Sciences Center. And I'm now working with OHS and the Center on Child Abuse Neglect to implement those recommendations, specifically for multidisciplinary teams, but overall. So what have I done since I've been here? OCCY used to be the fiscal agent for Children's Hospital to provide forensic interview training. We are now the training coordinator for the state of Oklahoma. We also have permission from Zero Abuse Project, who licenses child first training across the country and internationally, to do a cultural adaptation for Indian country. We will be the first state to do that, and we will be spearheading the development of that adaptation. I've already mentioned several partnerships that we've engaged in. I'm really proud about the partnership we have with Children's Advocacy Centers of Oklahoma. I think that has just really galvanized a consistent message across the state to all MDTs. I also collaborated with the Southern Regional Children's Advocacy Center. So in the United States, there are four regional advocacy centers. The southern region is the largest by far. And OCCY, you can barely see, is now published with the Southern Regional CAC on a paper specific for MDTs and CACs in response to children with problematic sexual behavior. So it's been really exciting to do.
Yes. What do we do to copy that white paper?
That is excellent. That can be downloaded from Southern Regional CAC. I'll also make sure to get a link to Amanda Jet to send out to all the commissioners. It was funded by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. And since publication, I have been presenting at national conferences on this paper with my co-author Jerry Seitz. So it's really exciting, and that gets Oklahoma out on a national stage in the work that we're doing here. I've also been asked more recently to head up a mental health committee on the American Professional Society on the Abuse of Children. I was nominated to be a board member, was not voted in, which was okay. But because of that nomination that led then to being asked to chair a mental health committee. APSAC is a multidisciplinary international organization on child abuse neglect that promotes the work of multidisciplinary teams, so it's exciting to have that on the horizon for me. Last fiscal year, I had one training completed separate from the CJA grant, so an invitation. This year, I've already completed four, and there are eight more scheduled. I've been asked by the National Children's Alliance to do presentations last year and this year, as well as many states to come do trainings at their conferences as well. So really very exciting work. Lastly, I'd like to end with the vision and mission, which is something that OCCY has been working on. And I got feedback from multidisciplinary teams. And so I just want to share with you that the vision of this department is that every child impacted by abuse neglect receives the highest quality services from multidisciplinary teams and professionals to achieve their full potential. I think OCCY is certainly making great headway to that vision. Our mission from the freestanding MDT department is to enhance the multidisciplinary teams and professionals' response to child abuse neglect by optimizing their access to resources, training, and technical assistance. So we are on board to not training out of the ballpark for this current fiscal year, engage in more projects, but also looking to make sure that we can give all teams access to what they need. And my personal goal is to make sure that the customer service makes it so that when Angela Marcy calls me and needs something, that I can make it as easy for her as possible so she can focus all of her brain on her job as a district attorney. The same for the mental health professionals that call, for the frontline OHS workers that call me. The easier it can be for them, the more they can use their time and resources to help children. It's amazing, that was only five minutes long. Isn't that crazy? I know. You were so enraptured. Are there any questions before the last piece of business?
Mr. Whitfield, could you talk about the referral? Who qualifies? Like, how? I saw the qualifications and the breakdown, a third, a third, a third. Who makes the ultimate decision on which cases go to an MDT?
Another very thoughtful question. Teams set their own inclusion criteria. And so there are some teams, for example, in Garvin County, they review every case that DHS brings to them. Most teams focus in on child sexual abuse and then extreme forms of other abuse. However, when it comes to referrals, team members refer their own cases. And so the coordinator often will reach out to their team, and please correct me, the two coordinators that are here, to collect those cases and to have ready for staffing. And then the team comes together to share all of that information and hopefully collectively make decisions on moving forward.
Do you know what happens to the cases that may not rise to the level of referral, or perhaps there's a priority list, or they referred elsewhere, or other resources?
The Human Services will continue to staff their cases internally and continue to do their work. I'd say it's uncommon for law enforcement, if a case comes to their attention, they generally refer to the child abuse hotline and wouldn't keep cases open if it didn't meet that kind of criteria.
And I can address that a little bit, too. So like in our, in our child protection team, we have basically the minimum standards that cases would be staffed, but ultimately, we staff pretty much anything that's going to come in, you know, to our, into our, kind of our catchment area.
Usually prior to a substantiation.
Yes, usually, yeah. It's usually if there's a, it might be a law enforcement investigation, it might be a DHS investigation. We usually try to staff them early, as early as we can in the case. It just kind of depends when the meeting falls in relation to when the event occurs.
Any other questions? Great presentation, Mr. Whitfield. Very detailed. Appreciate all your effort. We do need to vote on the annual review outcomes and next year's MDT list that's in your packet.
Do you want to tell this about any counties or any areas that may have had a team before or anything like that, in terms of broad categories?
Absolutely. So any county can create their own freestanding multidisciplinary team. When I came to OCCY in 2019, Caddo County had not passed their annual review, and they have not had a freestanding team since then. It was only just late last year or very early this year that there was enough interest expressed in creating a freestanding team there. Out of the 37 teams, they've all been designated as functioning, so they all meant minimum scores to be designated as such and to be eligible for funding. Out of the 37 teams, 46% received a score that was very high. And so there are 28 possible points. That 46% achieved 26, 27, and 28 points. Actually, I think eight of those teams, 22% received perfect scores. Those were, if I can group this together, Adair and Cherokee and Wagner, which are all in one district, Craig and Mayes, Grady, Haskell, Jackson, Johnston, King Fisher, Latimer, Logan, Marshall, McLean, Macintosh, Nawada in Oklahoma. And so they all have consistently done very well. I will say that you didn't hear Chris and Melchior talk, but it wasn't because of, it wasn't, everyone did well. Everyone did well. The scoring can be very picky. If you're missing a day, there's a ding. And take into account the pandemic, right? That it's been harder for teams. Most teams have been meeting virtually, and it's harder to get people together and signatures, et cetera. So not at all, at any kind of slide toward the teams that did not achieve 26 points, they still met criteria, they are still doing good work. The word.
And I'll, and I'll just comment, it's probably a reflection. No, I want to comment, in rural Oklahoma, it is extremely difficult to get a medical provider on our teams. Like, we've consistently struggled with that, and I would not be going out on a limb to say that's probably the problem in the majority of rural CPTs.
So we get a ding every month for that.
Right. Right.
And we should say that Dr. Stockit, who's now the chief medical examiner, or chief child abuse examiner for us here, that's one of her, that's one of her babies right now. She's desperate to train more people in rural Oklahoma and say, I'm not just interested in you doing exams, I want you to actually participate on MDTs as well. So she recognizes that she's part of, hopefully, the solution to that.
And I've seen a presentation by her recently at her last DAC meeting, and when you look at her map, Western Oklahoma in particular is empty. The problem.
If you'd like to see a map of where Mary has trained, Dr. Stockit, I'm sorry, superimposed over this lovely thing, I can also make that available to you. I told you, I love a good map, when you'd be able to identify people. There were eight freestanding teams that really struggled in the last year. And so don't think it's because people are doing awful work. Sometimes I think it's just it wasn't a good fit for the coordinator, or they really struggled. I'll show that those, Beckham County, their long-term coordinator was an OSBI agent, retired, and it now falls to a police detective in Elk City who is just crazy busy. So Beckham County, Chautauq and Pushmontah counties have really struggled to get people to attend meetings. They have a phenomenal coordinator, but they've also had some other local politics. They have a phenomenal coordinator, but they've also had some other local politics, unfortunately, that have impacted the team and their other resources. Creek County is managed by an assistant district attorney, who again is super busy in her work and is really working very hard. Garvin County has had a lot of changes. Lincoln County, unfortunately, is probably leading the pack for struggling. They've had a lot of change in that district, and it really has unfortunately impacted the team. I've been actively involved with them to try to help pull that around. Love County, also Stevens and Woodward. These are all places that have people that are dealing with personal life, caring for other family members. The woman in Woodward selfishly had a child, and you didn't prioritize that. And so there are reasons, so it's not that anyone is just dropping the ball. It is a struggle to maintain a group of very diverse people with very diverse personalities. We are partnering with Children's Advocacy Centers of Oklahoma to create an MDT foundation training, a curriculum that a consultant is creating and will be providing in district four. That's Kingfisher, Blaine, Garfield, and Canadian counties, that we will then have that curriculum to use statewide on our own. So we will own them, and that will then help teams be able to manage better.
I think I know the answer to this question, but is there a common technology that these teams use to manage the cases? Is it paper? How does it have some process?
It is paper.
I had a feeling, I mean, like I said, I think I knew the answer to that question. Not throwing stones, because there's a lot of that.
Right. Until Director Jacoby hired me, there was not a leadership position over the freestanding MDT department. And so bringing me on, part of the goals have been to help teams be able to streamline. Teams were allowed to select their own forms, create their own forms for how they want to collect data and how to do things. And so that means that there's probably six different ways that people are collecting, all by paper. Director Jacoby and I have talked about getting a database in place where people could enter information in real time. We've even talked of ideas of being able to get tablets or other electronic devices to each team where they can have in their meeting and just.
That's a good idea.
Just enter it right then. That would also allow us to collect more data and be able to do more with that data. Coming from the Health Sciences Center and Jane Solosky and Barbara Bonner, I don't believe in collecting data just for the sake of collecting it. It needs to be practical in some way, and that would be really helpful. Then all of the partners at the table can also have access to that data in real time. I will say that one thing I'm hoping to do with all the MDTs is require to have general meetings four times a year quarterly. No one's doing that. They've incorporated general meetings as part of their case review meetings, and it's more of a business meeting. What I'd like to see of those quarterly meetings become strategic planning meetings for the team. So if you're in Woodward, what are we seeing in our community that we need to address? Is it overdosing? Is it children with problematic sexual behavior? This weird anomaly where Rear County suddenly has accounted for a vast majority of the cases being referred to the Jackson County MDT. And so taking time then to review their data. I'm also fortunate to get from Nina Newman at Oklahoma Human Services, quarterly and annual data of reports made to the hotline that I then share with all of the teams, so teams could take their own data, immediately look at what DHS is sharing. Director Jacoby?
And we may have already talked about this, but PARB has rolled out their electronic system, and I would be willing to say Custer-Washatah would pilot an electronic use at our MDT meeting. I wouldn't mind, but it's very similar, that information that we're capturing, and it's all through a URL link. You could do it from your own device, it wouldn't have to be correct.
That's right. I recently met with the E-Team to start creating that.
And to point out, that's why we selected OU, the E-Team, to do the whole database, because we are happy with the start they have made for PARB, and we expect that they will be able to do that for every department. I will say, it might be a while for MDT, because we've got to fix OJASO. It's the Office of Juvenile Systems Oversight, and it is our largest department, and their system doesn't hardly work at all. So it'll probably take precedence and be bumped up. Am I wrong? Okay, yeah. And so we, that's kind of the order, but you're exactly right. Me and our brains see PARB and MDT collection very similar, because we're happy with PARB, that's why we really wanted to continue with the E-Team in the board.
If you are interested in attending any freestanding MDT case review meeting, you can get in touch with me directly, and I will find you someone that's most convenient. And I'll also put out the invitation, of course, any ideas. I mean, it takes, you're an amazing group of minds, and so any ideas that you have for this department, but also any ideas for trainings that are relevant to child abuse and neglect. School systems throughout Oklahoma have really taken to attending many of our trainings to learn more about child abuse and neglect. And so it's really, this is here for everyone in the state of Oklahoma. So I think the last order of business, again, was just voting on funding. I'll pass back to you, Chairperson.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the list of MDTs. Mr. Slant Hodges, sir, second?
Second.
Commissioner Schneider. Secretary Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron.
Same.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Harrington.
Yes.
Superintendent Hofmeister.
Yes.
Director Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kurz.
Yes.
Commissioner Laird.
Yes.
District Attorney Marcy.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Myers.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Slant Hodges.
Yes.
Judge Warren.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you all. Thank you again, Mr. Widerfield. Great work.
Thank you. I'll leave cards to sure at the end if anyone wants one, but I dare say you know how to get ahold of me.
Our next agenda item is to discuss the 2022 meeting dates for the commission, also in your pocket.
I appreciate, since these have coincided on our board dates as well, I appreciate the changes.
It's important to have you here. Any other comments or concerns about the date? All right. Okay. So a motion to approve the dates. Commissioner Slant Hodges, second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Secretary Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Harrington.
Yes.
Superintendent Hofmeister.
Yes.
Director Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kurz.
Yes.
Commissioner Laird.
Yes.
District Attorney Marcy.
She stepped down.
She stepped down. Commissioner Myers.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Slant Hodges.
Yes.
Judge Warren.
Yes.
And I skipped over agenda item number four, the OCCYOICA summer stop resolutions. There have been three summer stops, three, Weatherford, Tulsa, and Lawton?
Yes.
I had the privilege.
Three more to go.
Three more to go. I had the privilege of joining the summer stop in Lawton, and the teams, Commissioner Myers, you all did an outstanding job organizing, bringing together great community leaders doing really important work, so thank you for that. As such, we do have a resolution. We would like to present to all the summer stops. If I could get somebody to read it, but before I do, is there anything else you want to add? Or do you want to read it?
Yeah, well, I don't, everyone can read. I just want to say, we want to put these on beautiful certificate paper with the ribbon, and then we can mail it to everyone that helped us either organize or participated in it, and if they want to, so frame it, they can put it on the wall. But we wanted to include you guys in the thanking, as well as the board directors at the Institute for Child Advocacy, because it's been a tremendous amount of work on people's part. And I think I can almost, stops that have related to everyone, where something got showcased, Lawton, definitely, Superintendent Hofmeister, we, there was an assistant superintendent that just blew us all away there. His language was so spot on, on what you would want someone caring for children, particularly during a pandemic, to say. So all that to say is, everywhere we've gone, we've just been so excited about the efforts in Oklahoma. How you connect them is a big question, and how you expand those things that are really going like gangbusters, how you elevate that and expand is the question. We're not lacking in innovation and intelligence on how to do these things. We're lacking resources. So, that's it.
Well, I know we're short on time, and everybody gave their time, so please do read it at your convenience.
We do need a vote, so we can include them on the thank you.
Bring it.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Superintendent Hofmeister.
Yes.
Director Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kurz.
Yes.
Commissioner Laird.
Yes.
District Attorney Marcy.
Yes.
Commissioner Myers.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Slant Hodges.
Yes.
Judge Warren.
Yes.
Motion passes. We ask for an hour of your time, and I want to be very respectful of that, so we will table the minutes for our future, for our next meeting on November 19th. It is 2:02, I will take a motion to adjourn meeting. Secretary Brown, second?
Yeah.
W, second? All right. Let's roll. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.